Good evening, everybody. This is the Board of Trustees' regular meeting. Today's date is April 12, 2022. It is 7:30 p.m. This is meeting number 2022-07, and it is time for roll call. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Boarder.
Present.
Trustee Sack.
Present.
Trustee Pembroke.
Present.
Trustee Mallow.
Here.
Trustee Oluniechak.
Here.
Trustee Stalker.
Here.
Can I have a motion to allow trustee Desmond to pay telephonically?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oluniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Motion passes. Please join me in the pledge allegiance. Veterans may salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public comments. Do we have any public comments today, Madam Clerk?
We do. The first is Dale Kazmerik.
Dale? Dale, would you state your name, and are you an Oklaun resident?
Yes, my name is Dale Kazmerik. I've been an Oklaun resident for 46 years, since 1976. I'm also an Army veteran. I was serving in the Army from 1972 to 74 for Polk, Louisiana. Since becoming an Oklaun resident, I've, over and over again, seen village officials, including past and present mayors and trustees, completely ignore the wishes of their constituents, homeless, lower-income, and most recently, senior citizens. I'm a resident of the 3rd District, and I've seen village officials proceed with projects exclusively without input from those who would be affected the most. A few examples would be the elimination of the Montpaugh Stores on Cook Avenue and 95th Street, such as Bella's Coffee Shop, Rosatorium, Cook School, Eckers Meat Market, and others, only to replace them with storefronts that remained vacant for quite some time, probably due to high rent. While that was happening, the village was losing valuable property taxes. The closure of Cook Avenue, installation of the so-called Cook Avenue Park directly across the railroad tracks, that prevented Oklaun residents living in that area to have access direct route to 95th Street, and especially when the village built a commuter parking lot for those using the metro. This caused the village to have code enforcement officials block off East and West 96th Street and Laramie Avenue while the commuters exited from the lot. There was no research done, or very little, for this, and it created problems for the 3rd District residents in an attempt to find a direct route to 95th Street. But it also could have caused serious issues for emergency vehicles trying to provide services to residents. This created a major traffic jam and backed up vehicles on the 95th Street and throughout the neighborhood. Residents had to travel, in some cases, as far as 54th Street to gain access to 95th Street. Former 3rd District Bob Strape was called upon the situation numerous times, and nothing was done for years. In fact, towards the end of his tenure, he completely ignored his fellow residents and even refusing to call back his constituents. The most recent incursion was the large Avakin Healthcare Building that was built directly on the edge of the 3rd District. 2013, the building on 95th Street for the seniors was torn down to make way for another bank, and seniors had left without a permanent place for their activities. The city of Burbank has a population of about 28,000, and they have the Luis S. Viverino Center on Leamington Avenue. The city of Stickney, which I go to as well for a senior club, has a population of 6,700 people, and they have a permanent senior citizen activity center. Oklaun's population, as far as 2019, was about 56,000, and we were left without a permanent building for its seniors. We've been bounced around from the VFW Hall, McGuggan School, Hilton, and other restaurants. Recent box lunch activity that took place on March 31, 2022.
Your three minutes are up. Could you wrap it up, sir? Thank you.
Okay. Well, what I wanted to basically say is that in 2020, 19% of the Oklaun population is 65 years older. Why won't our elected officials devote more time to buildings, the dedicated building? Something has to be done.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you. Madam Clerk, another?
Kelly Mason.
Good evening. I'm also here to address the Senior Citizen Center. I attended a meeting at Oklaun Library on March 15 to discuss, it was a meeting, a general meeting, to discuss the possibility of having a senior area at the senior center, senior at the library for the seniors. And I have to say, overall, I was bitterly disappointed, the fact that we were just offering a multipurpose room for our seniors, and I was also disappointed in the overall tone of the meeting and how we treated our seniors at that meeting. As Dale mentioned, 20% of our population is over 65 years old. They deserve better, and we need to provide them with better. And in addition, they passed out an article, which I started to do some research on. Public Act 101-0029 was signed into law, 7/1 of 2019. In that act, the Village of Oklaun, or the Oklaun Senior Citizen Center, was given by grants $900,000. I have no idea if that money was dispersed. If it was not, why not? If it was, what happened to that money? Because it is very distinct in that public act that it is for the senior center. So I just wanted to speak to that and say that I had done a little bit of research. I have reached out to Fran Hurley and Bill Cunningham to also look into that. I understand the pandemic has come in between, but that was pre-pandemic, and our seniors are still waiting for an appropriate space. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol Tuman.
My name is Carol Tuman, and I've been a resident of Oklaun for more than 30 years and an active patron and volunteer at the Oklaun Library. I am here to try to persuade you to not disrupt the library trying to accommodate a senior center under the same roof. While library attendance might be low, I'm sure you realize that many people are still living in fear of the virus, and you can tell by the number of people still wearing masks. Normalcy will return. The college students will come home and gather at the library. My favorite scene is the family leaving the library with everybody carrying books, even the small children. Our mayor told me he envisioned a state-of-the-art facility for the seniors. The seniors do not want Mar-a-Lago. So tables and chairs, heating in the winter, cooling in the summer is enough, and that is what is available at Oak View. Classroom-sized rooms, two entrances, all on the main floor, more than adequate parking. I recently attended an Oklaun Garden Club event where many people were comfortably in attendance, and I noticed the large room had the possibility of division with folding doors. The huge expense of remodeling the library is unnecessary when adequate facilities are already available at Oak View.
Thank you.
That is all the public comments.
Number 10 on the agenda will be a presentation on what the village proposes to do in cooperation with the library on how we can improve senior centers, and we can answer a lot of the questions that were brought up at that time. All right. Number four on the agenda is conflict of interest disclosure. Any trustee on this board have any issues with anything on the agenda tonight? Hearing none, we will move on to number five, which is the Eagle Scout recognition. Shane Michael Skiffington, are you in the audience, sir? Please step up to the podium. Trustee Oluniechak, you want to join me? Let me check. Thank you. Listen, as a father of an Eagle Scout, I know the work that you put into this, and I also know the work of your leaders, okay, that got you to this point. And if you were anything like my son, I know the work your parents did to get you to this point, but, you know, congratulations. Very few young men reached the point of Eagle. And if you know the history of Eagle Scouts, many of them were instrumental in many of the famous things that have happened here in America, and I'm sure you're going to go on to be one of those famous people. Congratulations. I'm joined here with your trustee, trustee Alex Oluniechak. Trustee Alex.
Yes, Shane. Again, I was at your awards ceremony at St. Gerald, and I've known you and your family for well over 20. And I've got to say, as a young man that represents everything about the Eagle Scouts, you show a day in and day out by what you do. The amount of volunteerism that this young man has put in, the amount of hours of tireless work where he only got the credit of being able to say, "I did it," is incredible. I can tell you from carnivals to fundraisers, to all the various things that not only Shane has done, but the parents have to be credited with each and every work ethic. So you're a great representative from St. Gerald. You're a part of an elite crowd, and I am proud of you, and I'm proud for your family for the hard work. Congratulations. Keep up the good work. This certificate of recognition is awarded to Shane Michael Skiffington for outstanding achievement and exceptional leadership ability, as evidenced by his attainment of Eagle Scout, presented by the Village of Oklaun, March 20, 2022, by the honorary mayor and myself. So congratulations and thank you.
In the future, I would like all Boy Scout leaders, all future Eagle Scouts, to let me know when such a ceremony takes place, because I try to make every one of these events at the local level. But I'd like to bring Eagle Scouts to this board in the future for recognition at this point. Congratulations. Thank you.
If I could just add, the mayor has been an advocate for Eagle Scouts, and discussion with us at the board, and the mayor asked if it was appropriate, and we, as a board, unanimously support the idea of recognizing fine, outstanding citizens and individuals at this village board. And we should be very proud of these children and young men, because they are our future. So keep up the good work, and thank you, Mayor, for bringing this forward.
Thank you, trustee Oluniechak. All right. Number six is some more celebration. It's the 2001 Fire and Public Safety Coloring Contest winners. And I would like to ask the chief of police to join me up here.
All right, we've got a big crowd. I want to let you know, this is not coming.
Okay. Is this the, which one's the chief? The first one?
Yep, so this is, this is for public safety, so that's the auditorium, and this is fires.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
But that one's not coming.
Okay. 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 Go ahead. Go ahead, Catherine.
Good evening. Each year, the Oklaun Chamber collaborates with the Oklaun Fire Department, Police Department, to produce the annual Fire and Police Public Safety Coloring Book. This book is a teaching tool for thousands of kindergarten through 4th grade students in the community. The book is distributed by the Oklaun Fire Department each October during Fire Prevention Month. The book features numbers of drawings designed by the children, the dangers of fire, talking to strangers, traffic safety, and more. The first place all winners of the contest have their drawings proudly displayed on the cover of the following year's book. At this time, I'd like to also recognize the Oklaun Community High School students that contribute to the operations of the book. These students were recognized today at Oklaun Community High School. The students' names are Elliot Flores, Brianna Buttoney, Hadaya Hassan, Madison Martin, Catherine Passanau, Abigail Ruda, Esmeralda Serna, Stephanie Van Aguilera, Tina Valnuva, Assira Williams, Vanessa Cruz, Neela Perka, and Anna Pollard. These are all under the direction of the art teacher, Jennifer Clark. First and foremost, the Oklaun Chamber would like to thank the Oklaun Fire Department and Police Department for their continued support of this popular and educational effort, as well as the tireless community commitment to keep our village safe. We'd like to thank the non-for-profits that sponsor the book and the ads. This year, we have so many businesses to thank for the prizes that were given to the winners this evening. Oklaun Bank and Trust, Oklaun Chamber of Commerce, the Children's Museum of Oklaun, Nothing But Cake, and Frere Candy. And now, our Terry Voyager, our mayor, is going to present the winners with their certificates. Thank you.
Do you have the certificates? Oh, okay. Anna. Okay. Our third prize goes to Merva Curly. Is she here? Merva? Mava. Mava, I'm sorry. Certificate? Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Second prize goes to Samuel Haig. Hug. Hi, Sam.
Hello.
All right. Thank you. Good job. And the first prize goes to Nasso, and I'm probably going to, Nisa? I'm probably going to break this last name. Amdezdenzaba? Ah, that's a good name. Thank you. Thank you. Want to say something to your mom and dad? You're going to be a future Rembrandt, right? Well, you're already a Mona Lee. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Thanks, chief. All right. Fire chief here? Yes, he is. Fire chief, we're going to recognize the third prize winner. That goes to Ivan Carver-Roos. Kyro Robin.
Hi.
Come on. You've got to say more than that. Are you going to be a future artist? Huh? No? Congratulations, son. Thank you. Second prize will not be here tonight, but that would be Mary Ann Carvenova. And first prize goes to Geneva Giovanti Harita. Okay. Yeah, you've got a big crowd. You want to say hi to everybody?
Hello.
Hi. Thanks for coming out.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And next, we're going to recognize a police officer for his special work for the Village of Oklaun. Officer Carroll, are you in the audience? Come on up, officer.
All right. I'd like to thank everybody for attending tonight. This is Officer Bob Carroll. He's one of our officers on the afternoon shift. I recently got a communication from the FBI pertaining to an arrest Bob made back in 2019. So on October 10, 2019, Bob made a traffic stop, which resulted in the driver not having a valid driver's license. He went the extra mile. He did the extra work, and as he was inventorying the stuff in the car, he realized that there were multiple hotel keys, cell phones, and other things that would indicate sex trafficking. There were also two young females in the car. Bob contacted DCFS, and ultimately, the FBI was brought in to conduct an investigation. That offender was eventually charged on March 3, 2020, with sex trafficking of children by force, fraud, or coercion, and transportation of minors with intent to engage in criminal sexual activity. I received a call from Special Agent Rob Wurzach, who couldn't be here tonight. He was assigned to Washington hacking. There was a press release put out by the FBI last month. Wisconsin man sentenced to 25 years in federal prison for violently sex trafficking two children. A man has been sentenced to 25 years in federal prison for violently sex trafficking two children in Chicago area and Wisconsin. In late 2019 and early 2020, David Smith took sexually explicit photographs of the children, who at the time were 16 and 17 years old, and posted them in commercial sex advertisements on the websites Skip Games and Mega personals. He then arranged for the children to meet customers in hotel rooms, keeping the money the children received. On one occasion, Smith had the 17-year-old victim, hit the 17-year-old victim in the face after she mistakenly accepted fake cash. On another occasion, Smith hit the 16-year-old victim in the face after he learned that the girl had contacted her. Smith, 28, of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, pled guilty last year to a federal sex trafficking charge. In addition to the prison sentence, U.S. District Judge John Tharp on Friday ordered Smith to pay $50,000 in restitution to the victim. The sentence was announced by John Lausch, United States Attorney for the Northern District of Illinois, and Emerson Junior Special Agent in Charge of the Chicago Field Office of the FBI. Valuable assistance was provided by the Oklaun Police Department, FBI Milwaukee, FBI Kansas City, FBI St. Louis, and FBI Wisconsin, Missouri State Highway Patrol also. The government was represented by Assistant U.S. Attorney Anne Marie Ursi and Caitlin Wogomoff. The defendant caused his minor victims irreparable harm and trauma by causing them to engage in commercial sex on numerous occasions. Assistant U.S. Attorney Anne Marie Ursi argued that the government's sentencing memorandum, these victims will carry the emotional scars of the defendant's actions for the rest of their lives. So the FBI wanted us to know that if it wasn't for Bob's stop, that this could have still been going on right now. But that's just the extra step that Bob usually takes on all his cases. He's one of our most proactive officers. He probably leads the department in gun arrests and probably every other arrest total there is. That's just what he does, and we're grateful to have him. So good job, Bob.
I've said it 100 times, and I'll say it again. I cannot be more proud of the department. They are just outstanding, and Bob's story can be repeated. Many times, we have many good officers, give much more than just a paycheck, collecting their paycheck. They're here for this village, and they're committed to this town, and I'll stand behind you guys. Do the job as good as you're doing, and we'll all be safer. Thanks a lot, Bob. Bob, do you have anybody here?
This is my daughter.
Daughter?
14-month-old daughter Eva.
It's good noise. Amen. Okay. Good. Okay. We're going to get in now into the meat of the village business, the Eagle Scout. If you guys want to go, you're welcome to stay, okay? But I'm sure you're going to go celebrate and have a soda or milkshake, hopefully. Thank you. Okay. Eight is the approval of the closed meeting minutes of 2022-04 dated March 8, 2022. A motion, please?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Desmond.
Trustee Desmond. Tim, are you there?
Yes.
Yeah. We have a motion here to approve the closed meetings of 2022-04 dated March 8, 2022. We've had a motion and a second, and we're going for the vote.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oluniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Motion approved. Number nine is approval of the regular meeting minutes of 2022-06 dated March 22, 2022. Motion, please?
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oluniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Motion passes. Number 10 is the senior center update. I'd like to, before we begin this, just talk a little bit about the history of our senior center. Before I got elected to trustee, that was maybe eight years, nine years ago. We had a senior center. It was an old building, and it was located right here at 95th and Raymond. The previous, the previous, previous administration decided to sell that property, and they were out of their building. And the mayor, Barry, looked for a facility that we can continue our senior services. I should point out that there was mention that Stickney and other townships do great senior services, and you know, so does Worth Township. They have a great senior center. I've been there. I've looked at it. It's amazing. Oklaun is one of the few suburbs, okay, that actually duplicate that and have a senior center in our town. Well, after getting elected, Dr. Barry tells me that when that move occurred, she had a lot of resistance to leaving the center of town. Many of the seniors were not happy with the change at that time and complained for a number of years about the location. Well, now, we've been in that location for about 10 years. I became the mayor about a year ago, and I was getting complaints from seniors who live at 87th and Harlem, okay? Oklaun's boundaries go to Harlem, to Pulaski, 111th Central, and that was not conveniently located for them, and there were constant requests to bring the senior center back into the center of town. With the help of Alex Oluniechak, the Oklaun Park District, and the Oklaun Library, much discussion was made on how we can bring the seniors back into the center of town. And the Oklaun Library is probably the largest public building in this community, paid for by the taxpayers, and they have a lot of space there. A little bit of the library's mission has changed over the past decade, created by the internet and the computer, and not as many people are in there doing the research work that they did for hundreds of years. So, and we did some surveys on the attendance at the library, and perhaps one of our members here mentioned that the COVID, the virus, may have kept people back, but it's down substantially. So the idea was, is if we bring the seniors back to the center of town, the library being the most likely location, build a facility within the library for them, we can accommodate not only the seniors that live in 105th and Cook, but the seniors that live at 87th and Harlem, and the library was the most likely place. So we did some research. We did some architectural renderings. We've had some meetings with the Oklaun Library. We're waiting for them to give us the okay, and that happens, I can guarantee you that this senior center will not only duplicate all the services that you've got used to over the last 10 years, but will provide additional services. The library constantly has programs going, whether it's an author, whether it's cooking classes, in addition to what you guys are used to at the senior. We'll build a facility where you can accommodate all that you do. You can do your box lunches. There's even space there that where if we were to get an abundance of seniors there for a box lunch, we can accommodate them too in other rooms within the library. So with that, I would like to ask our village manager, Tom Phelan, to do a presentation here on where we're at with this concept.
Thank you, Mayor. You summarize things very well. One of the toughest jobs we have as elected and appointed officials is doing the best we can with the tax dollars that the seniors and others provide us. And one of the things that we've struggled with for more than a decade is that very issue with the senior center. When it was on 95th Street, as the mayor said, it was an older building, a large room, large facility, but not a lot of amenities. And since that closed, and now we've moved around, and we're at the McGuggan School, at the end of the day, we're sitting in a grammar school, former grammar school. And as you'll see when I go through the presentation, for those who don't know what the senior center is, you'll see a couple of quick videos on what we have, and it's limited. And I can sympathize with those who go to it and feel it's a part of their own, it's a place that they can go and call their own. This is not just creating a space in the library. As the mayor said, this is working together with the library, because libraries have changed dramatically. Most schools have gotten rid of libraries. High schools, they just eliminated them. They converted them to AV centers, all other matter of use because of what the mayor said. People aren't taking books out anymore. People aren't taking books out anymore. They're using the internet. And the library is seventy thousand square feet of space, as big as our community's, our facility here. We've been working with the library board and staff for more than a year to talk about how we could work together to provide an outstanding experience for our seniors. And the idea, we have some library board members in attendance here, is the idea that maybe seniors could bring grandchildren or their own children and enjoy what the library has to offer. And as you'll see in this presentation, the library has a lot to offer. You know, you forget about it because you're thinking, well, I don't get books anymore. Trustee Mallow is one of the biggest supporters of our library. He's over there renting movies, taking out books, signing up for seminars. And that's the thing that we wanted to demonstrate tonight, is this was not an ill-conceived idea. This was almost two years of research on this matter alone and looking to where we can not just move people from one classroom or one room to another and set them up with card tables and chairs to play cards, but to build out an area, and an area that's called the Encore Center. That wasn't my idea, Mayor. I don't know whose idea that was, but I thought that was a great name. It's not that anybody thinks that Senior Center is a bad name, but this is the Encore Center, bringing people back out, people who may have stayed home because of COVID or because they're not able to get around. It's centrally located. And as you'll see in this presentation, you know, I think, we think, this will blow anything that the seniors have had, at least from our perspective, away. Anything that we've provided as a village for the last three, four decades, and this is very preliminary, by the way. The architect who created the design you'll see coincidentally is the architect who built the addition on the library twenty-plus years ago. Isn't that correct, Sue? This is a person who's building libraries all over northern Illinois and really calling them community centers because they've been repurposed. The libraries that we traditionally now know as a place you go and check out books, that's changed dramatically. And that's what he's telling us is happening. So this seemed like a perfect opportunity to bring these two issues together, because the senior center that we have now, again, it's in an old grammar school, McGugan School, Hundred-fifth and Laramie. It's costing taxpayers a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Now, you might argue it can't always be about the money, but it is, ironically, especially for our seniors, who we often hear from, they don't want to be taxed out of their homes. They want to stay in Oaklawn. And we found that this is not a particularly good use of money. I think you'll see this, we have a couple of quick videos where you'll see what we have to offer, and it's not much. I know for those who are attending and patronizing it now, it feels like home, it's their center, it's your center, but we strongly think if you give this an opportunity, give it a chance, not only will you enjoy it more, more people will come. And at the end of the day, we think it's as much about the camaraderie, the fellowship of meeting with others and going out together and playing cards, watching movies, and we just think it's the right way to go. So if we could dim the light, Sergio, in the front of the room.
Mr. Manager, can I just add a couple of things on this? I think you've both said it very well, but in dealing with a lot of seniors and talking to a lot of seniors, we owe more to the seniors, and this is going to be an enhancement of what you already have and a revitalization. Just the vision, when you see this, being able to go into the park and enjoy a day at the park, or your box lunch in the park, listening to a band at the pavilion, this is encompassing the library campus and enhancing what you have.
Thank you, Trustee Olenichek. The first slide, you'll see there, it's going to be a number of slides that the mayor and Trustee Olenichek met with the library board about, kind of conceptually, and then we integrated some more up-to-date information to kind of give everybody a sense of where this came from and where we're going. So you'll see here, basically, we're showing the kinds of images we envisioned for a library/Encore Center or community center, where it's not just books, but it's a place for learning, social activities, and creativity, which, as I think you'll see later on, when we show you what we have now at our senior center, our seniors badly need. You know, we really believe that, and we think you're going to find what this plan will show is going to deliver that. So again, that next slide, you'll see, what we envision as a place, we're not just seniors, but all of Oaklawn. Seventy thousand square foot of space is a lot of space, and this is not just a room, as somebody said here. It's not just a wall partition. There is a lot of elements that are designed with seniors in mind, a drive-up window. As you know, now there's a book drop in the drive-through. We're talking about putting a window in, and I'm using the collective "we" because I'm looking at the library board members here. We are working together with the library, investing a lot of money, likely a half million dollars that I'll get to in a minute. We have not received a dollar from the state. For those who referenced the story that was in the South Town, it was a 2019 promise from Governor Pritzker, arguably made in the midst of politicking and elections, but even in the article said it's not likely we'll see it for several years. We haven't seen it yet. We are working with Senator Cunningham. We hopefully will see it in the next budget, and as every budget happens, it often gets cut. It's not holding us back. We committed to doing this whether we get the money or not, and for the record, we haven't got one dollar yet from the state, but we're likely going to invest a half million dollars with the library to build this facility out. The types of places that the libraries and other, the architects have talked about is what you would like, not just as seniors, but any group, you know, small group spaces, not just this big expansive room with tables where you can sit in, but areas you can go with your smaller groups, cozy reading areas. One of the things that they were talking about that everybody likes is to get a book and not have to just go home with it, but to sit in the library in a comfortable area, read, maybe talk with friends. There's already a space for a cafe, there's been a couple of cafes in the library, they're talking about expanding that space to provide social reading and a coffee area. And then, of course, places where you can meet, collaborate, have a seminar. We'll talk later about, the library just had a state planning seminar. Who but the seniors would benefit from seminars like estate planning, tax help, social security help? These are the types of thing the library offers and oftentimes we don't know about. So then, introducing the Oaklawn Library Encore Center. And here is where we're going to give you a little bit of background, I won't belabor the point, about how we came to be where we are today. As the mayor said, he and Trustee Olenichek and Trustee Stocker have been talking about what we can do for the seniors. And Trustee Olenichek in particular, because Bill Hall's here, the old senior center was in the second district, the library's in the second district. So between him, Trustee Stocker, and the mayor, they asked staff last year to do some field research, to see how often our senior center has been used and what hours of the day. Because at the end of the day, we're trying to create an environment. Maybe they're not going in the morning, maybe they're there more in the afternoon. Certainly, the box lunches draws a crowd. So we wanted to do good research, and we did so in the fall of two thousand twenty-one over the course of several months. And you'll see from, you know, ten AM to two PM, the average attendance was, you know, six point seven at ten, ten at noon, and six point four at two. We did more recent research, and the numbers are lower. Certainly in the morning, there was, in the counts that we did, there weren't anybody at ten. At noon, there were eleven. Now, this is an average over five days, okay? Some days are more crowded than others. Wednesdays, there's a bridge club, that's when you tend to see a higher crowd, but those are the averages over Monday through Friday. And then below that, the mayor, Trustee Olenichek, said, can you go out and look at other facilities in Oaklawn where we might house the senior center? And ideally, places that we're already paying for it, because it does have to matter, the cost of these things. We just can't spend money without any real, you know, plan or purpose. So we did. We looked at all of the facilities that the Park District had, including the Oakview Center that was mentioned, and we rated them on various metrics, the size, the quality, the capacity, the amenities, and the patronage. And without question, the library checked all the boxes we need. The size is large, it's excellent quality, the capacity is pretty immense, depending on where you're at, extensive amenities. If you go on the website, you look at the library, what they have to offer, there's something going on every day. And the patronage, as we've talked about, given, even pre-COVID, the changes in the library industry, the business of libraries has changed dramatically, and we're trying to work with the library to pivot and try to make better use of the facility we have there, because like us, we take, like, the library takes a lot of tax dollars, so does the village. So if we can work together to create a space that's comfortable and warm and welcoming, you know, that's what we wanted to do. And then with that in mind, we did a more detailed research at the library to show the patronage over hundreds of checks from ten AM to two PM on the first and second floors to see, you know, would this be a good fit? Would there be too many people there during the day when the seniors tend to be at the senior center? And it turns out, it's a perfect synergy. There isn't a lot of patronage during the day hours at the library. There weren't over hundreds of data samples. And there, if we want to attract people to the building, and we do, to take advantage of the amenities, and it is the center of town, we thought, what a perfect opportunity to look at a senior area within the library. Next slide. Frequently asked questions, some of these have been talked about already. The most pressing one is why are we doing it? And there are three reasons primarily, because we want to create a space for seniors and provide them with more activities, more amenities, more things to do, other than playing cards, watching movies, playing chess, the kinds of things that we've been offering for a couple of decades, some box lunches, maybe once or twice a month, something that's there every day, multiple things sometimes in a day. The next question is, how much does it cost to run the current center at McGugan School? It's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of taxpayer money a year to run the senior center. What kind of activities the current senior center offer? You could see the calendar of the current senior center, there's a lot of card-playing, pinnacle, bridge, there's movies, there's box lunches. It's a good menu of options. We would argue we could do a lot better working with the library. And so just for the record, we wanted to show, for those who've never been to the senior center, for those who don't know what we're talking about when you're trying to envision it, we had, we have our maintenance people over there a couple of times a week to clean up, to set up, to take down. So we just had one of our people just take quick videos and load them to YouTube. The first one is a Wednesday when the senior center hosts a bridge club, and that's when it tends to be the most crowded, and there's two classrooms that are used. So we're going to look at this first video just to give you a sense of what we're talking about. Okay, so if that would have worked, you would have saw a video.
Come on, come on, he can play.
Of our maintenance person walking in and out of two classrooms. And as somebody rightfully said, card tables set up, people playing cards, on the counters, coffee areas, some Danish and donuts, but at the end of the day, two classrooms. The type of classrooms we're all picturing, where kids years ago sat and learned. And this, again, this is when we have two classrooms used on the busier days. And then the other quick video snippet is a Friday, and it will basically show the same thing, if Sergio can bring it up, it's not necessary, but only one classroom. Because again, as we've found, the patronage at our own senior center has fallen off, and we believe largely because there's not a lot that we offer. The village can do so much more, we can provide so many more things, and we already are with the library. So that's how this concept came together. And asking, I've said it multiple times, are the library offerings better? Well, as I said, if you look at our own senior center over the course of several months, you'll see various activities, cards, pinnacle, bridge, movies, box lunches. In just one week, a recent week, the library had art classes, computer classes, basic computers, estate planning seminar, writers' group, book discussions, crochet club, tech health, Simmons School of Student Recitals. That was in a five or six-day period. That can't compare to what we are offering in our own senior center. And that was just one week, a recent week. Sue, Joe, you probably know that you're doing that all the time. That's the kind of thing we want to bring our seniors to. The question about what will it cost? Right now, the preliminary estimate's between four hundred and five hundred thousand to build it out, not just creating a room for people to put card tables and chairs in, but a center, an Encore Center that's built out amenities, if you can go to the next, I'm sorry, I'll finish this one. I already talked about the money that's been referenced sometimes and internet, and, you know, as our former mayor Barry said, social networks will be the cause of World War III. I think we're seeing it now, but bad information gets shared, it gets shared, it gets amplified. People are writing letters to the editor, sharing more bad information, all because they have beliefs that are based not in fact, but in opinions and other agendas, right? This has been a two-year process, just this part alone, working with the library. As the mayor said, it goes back ten years, our efforts. Mayor Barry, it's one of her biggest disappointments that she could not deliver and tried very hard on a facility that our seniors will love. It's one of her biggest disappointments, so we're carrying the torch. The mayor said as soon as he got elected, that's what he wants to do first. So yes, there's nine hundred thousand dollars written on a state budget that we have not seen yet, that we are lobbying to get, but I want to make it clear again, we're not waiting. We're going to spend this money. The library's committed as well. We haven't decided how to split it, but we're both committed to doing something for our seniors. And now I want to get into a couple of schematics, they're somewhat technical, you can't see some of the lighter shaded areas or the architectural drawings, but this is the current drive-up area, that's Raymond Avenue, there's some entrance over there. And the idea is to create the Encore area, but also tie it in to other things that seniors might like. You may not be able to read things here, but there's a reading nook that's going to be built out. There's a handicap-accessible entrance. The drive-through that exists now for just book drop-offs will be turned into an actual drive-through. For those who don't want to get in and out of the car, you can drive up, pick up, drop off. That's something that doesn't exist anymore, doesn't exist to this point. And the social aspect is critical. You know, that's the one thing this architect that we're relying upon is telling us. He said, the centers that are being built now, the more you can create areas, we're bringing people together, not sitting by themselves, reading, the more successful the centers become, the more people patronize those centers. So as you see, this design is a massive space, certainly probably two to three times the space of the current senior center as we define it, the classroom or two. So we're not taking away, we're adding to exponentially and investing in significantly, because the lion's share of what we're paying now for our senior centers is to pay a company to host the senior center, right? For those who are paying taxes, especially seniors, I would hope you would think, well, wait a minute, we're spending a lot of money already at the village, at the library, and they're providing all of these amenities, all of these services, seminars, classes for free, effectively, because we're already paying for it. Why wouldn't we do something like this? Next slide. And this is just a bigger blown-up area. You'll see that they can create partitions, they can make it private, to the extent in the evenings, when the senior center that we currently have is not being used, they can open it up for others to use. It's just a very good use of space. But it is the Encore Center. It's targeted to and designed around seniors, what seniors like, what seniors need, what seniors want. And that's what the thrust of this whole initiative has been from the beginning. This is just another blow-up of the drive-up area, a customer service area, you'll see leisure reading, you know, there is the night drop that exists. But again, this is something the library board said, hey, if we're going to do this, let's do this right. Let's just not create a space like they have now, the seniors, and move them into a new space. Let's build it out. Let's expand, handicap accessible, blow out the window, do some things that really are going to make people walk in and say, wow, this is significantly better than what we've had in the past. And we're confident about that. The library's been working closely with the architect, and we're excited to get this started. And I think all of the seniors, as the mayor said, it's difficult. When you live near the senior center, it's great. When you're not, I have a neighbor who was very, she was the head of the seniors group from Art Parish, she doesn't get out very much, and she says it's just a little bit further than she'd like to travel. Centrally located, you have, you know, at least we can say we're trying to do the best for as many people as possible and make it as convenient for as many people as and make it as convenient for as many people as possible. And these are some of the things, again, just components of what the built-out space would look like. And you know, how you can adapt what a current library looks like. And traditionally, we all, you know, remember, sitting at tables quietly, reading books, being shushed by librarians. That, that's changed now. It's community-focused, it's bringing people together, it's providing multiple amenities. And that's what the library's committed to do, that's their mission, as they change it and adapt to what's going on. And it's what we are happy to partner with them to do, to bring a solution that's going to benefit a lot of people. And that's it.
Thank you, Tom. As trustee Olenichak said, one of the exciting things in my book, and remember, I'm 75 years old. I qualify as a senior, okay? One of the exciting things here is we're going to do a punch-out here, which will allow the seniors to go move out on the north side of the library and make use of that village green on beautiful days. We can set up a tent, we can do our box lunches in the early, in the nice weather days out there. We can have entertainment out there. I can, I can see this as becoming really, a really desirable place for every senior in this community. I know change is hard. Every time we've had to change anything, there has been some resistance. And resistance is good, it keeps us on our toes. But I sincerely believe that this would be positive. And I think most of the board feels the same way. And I think when it's done, the seniors will feel the same way too. And along as we're on the seniors, I wanted to just touch on the bus. As you know, Oklaun ran a senior bus for a number of years. When the pandemic hit and we were faced with serious budget shortfalls, we sat down as a board on our budget hearings and had to look at what we can eliminate, okay, without raising taxes. Are we going to eliminate firemen? Are we going to eliminate policemen? Are we going to stop paving streets? Well, we did some of that. We didn't eliminate police at all, we actually increased our police department. But one of the things we canceled was the senior bus. I know, and I had a hard time with that as a trustee to make that vote, but I'm responsible to the residents of the Village of Oklaun. When I ran, the thing I heard the most, as I went door-to-door, is don't raise my taxes. And I am a taxpayer myself, and I don't want to raise the taxes. But anyway, with the help of trustee Bud Stalker, I reached out to Worth Township. You know, Stickney Township was mentioned earlier today, they run a senior bus. And I talked with Patricia Murphy, Supervisor Patricia Murphy. I called all the mayors in Worth Township and saw what they were doing. And Patricia Murphy, she said, this is a great idea. I said, we can all work together, we can all support in the costs of a senior bus, and we can get this up and running, we can take seniors to places other than just Oklaun. If your doctor's in New Orleans Park, and I don't know, that's going to be up to Worth Township. But we will provide services on this bus for any community within Worth Township. So if you need to go to your doctor's in Evergreen Park or in Alsop, that bus is going to be available. And we've had quite a few meetings on this. I've worked with the U.S. Congressman, Marie Newman. I brought her into the fold to discuss ways in which we can pay that with her leverage. I think she instilled with all the suburban mayors, surrounding mayors, that this would be a great idea. And I think that Township will be making an announcement here on the startup of this senior bus very, very shortly. We've already got all the workings done, we just want to make sure everything's in place when we call off the date. So you'll be hearing some more on a senior bus. Again, I just want to touch, you know, you pay your taxes for the library, you pay your taxes for the village, you pay your taxes for Worth Township, you pay your taxes for all the schools. And everybody that runs those things has a little kingdom. And getting them to partnership with their neighbors, other taxing bodies, is a difficult thing. When I was a park district commissioner, that was my mission on the park district. Why can't we work with the village and provide better parks, and the village have better policing, and help share with the taxpayer dollars? It's all our money. And I think this concept of a senior center, bringing it back to the center of town, is a winner without a doubt.
Terry, can I say a couple of words about the bus?
Yes, please.
One of the things you have to remember about having a bus service that is not just Oklaun, but Worth Township, is you greatly increase the number of places that you can take your bus to at a lower cost per village. And that's what's going to be very important. We had a ridership of about 1,000 people, and that's it. Only those 1,000 people would ride because there weren't enough places to go. We did break the rules and go across the street to Chicago Ridge Mall. Now you can go to Evergreen Plaza and a lot of other places. And there are so many doctors that are so close, but so far, when you have to take a bus. And now we can greatly expand that opportunity. So I think having Worth Township in charge of this system, and we sat and listened to some presentations about computerized bus service, locating services and things like that. There are a number of ways that you can call up for a reservation and get a bus ride. We'll have people in charge of routing these buses. It'll be more effective than it was for somebody who just know where he has to go. It'll be routed right on a screen in front of him. It's a great system, and I hope it'll work out well. I wish you'd give it a chance, I'm really looking forward to it. That's it.
Thank you, trustee. All right, we move on to new business by village trustees. I'll start in District One. Tim, do you have anything? Trustee Desmond?
Yeah, I have no new business.
Thank you. District Two?
Yeah, I just want a couple of things, I'll be quick. Nightcore is doing extensive work in the village, specifically Second District. I know that many residents have called and asked, with all the sidewalk removal and parkway removal, what is the expected timeframe that Nightcore is going to be getting these repairs done? I can tell you that we have asked Nightcore to come and give a full board presentation. We hope to have that the first week of May, first meeting in May, I should say, it'll be the second Tuesday. But I know that there are some concerns because there have been some bad experiences in the past, where from when the work was done, the tear-up was done, to when the patching was done, to when the actual finished job was done, where there was a considerable lag period of time. So I just want to let the residents know, I understand, and I will get them an answer so what they can expect coming through May, June, July, and August. Other than that, I just want to wish everyone a very happy Easter. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee. District Three?
Thank you, mayor. I just do have one thing, it's actually a group of things here as far as the schedule. I did promise a few meetings ago that I would have the concert series, the Sunday concert series scheduled, and I do have that here. The first thing, though, on July 2nd, we'll be having our Fourth of July Parade, it lands on Saturday. It will be that evening, the parade starts at four o'clock. We will be having a concert that evening, it starts at six o'clock, and it will be Young Guns performing on the gazebo green here that Saturday evening. Secondly, the list of the Sunday concerts, July 17th is the first one after the July 2nd Parade. July 17th, The Dancing Noodles will be in town on Sunday at seven o'clock. Sunday, July 31st, at seven o'clock, we'll be having a teen showcase. One of our commissioners runs a teen showcase that evening from high schools. So that performance will also be from seven to 9:30. There's usually multiple different acts that happen that evening. Sunday, August 7th, on the gazebo green, Take Cover will be playing. August 14th, Sunday again, seven o'clock, 51 Lincoln will perform. August 18th, I'm sorry, August 28th, the Sunday concert at seven o'clock. One of our biggest votes on the Arts and Events Commission. Peach's Beach Party was the number-one vote getter during our AEC meeting a few Wednesdays ago. They'll be performing that evening. Then we have two more concerts after the Oklaun Fall Festival, which happened September 9th, 10th, and 11th. Those evenings, Friday evening, we usually like to announce our main stage. Our main stage on September 9th will be American English. They've performed a few different times in the past, to a very big fanfare, a Beatles band. September 10th, that Saturday evening, we'll have the Boy Band Night, who's also been received very well by our community. Then on the evening of Sunday, September 11th, the last evening of the Fall Festival, we'll have Radio Gaga perform, it's basically a Queen and Lady Gaga performance. And watching the video is just amazing, I think it's going to end the evening, and that whole concert festival phenomenally. And the last thing, after the September event, we'll have two more fall Sunday concerts. September 25th, The Gotham Ramblers. And then on October 2nd will be our last Sunday concert, and that's going to be Rev Dog. I'm real proud of some of these bands, they're all, there's a lot of them that are Oklaun-forward. They have members that live here, so it was important that our commission gave those bands a chance. So I think that's my two minutes, right?
Have as long as you need, trustee.
Thank you. That ends our report, mayor.
You know, thanks for all your work on selecting these bands. I've seen a couple of them, including Lady Gaga. She is phenomenal, you would think you were at a major event. She's good, so you're doing a good job out there in the green. Trustee Four?
Thank you, mayor. Just one item, those residents that are interested in participating in the St. Germain 5K Run, it's Saturday, September 30th. You can register at www.stgermainschools.com. That's it, mayor.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Stalker?
I've said my piece, thank you.
You did a fine job too. Trustee Sock, how was the baseball game today?
Sox won.
Ah, that was good. I hope you were sitting in the sun, though.
I was.
Okay, good.
Every, every meeting, we could sit here and thank our police and fire department. As residents, you don't know everything that goes on behind the scenes. We find a lot more of that out, and what these two departments do, we don't thank them enough. But tonight, I want to thank a different group as well, and that's our Public Works Department, run by Bill Meyer. In the last four to six weeks, I've probably gotten six to 10 emails from different constituents in my district with different concerns from street resurfacing, to people leaving garbage on their lawn, to numerous items. And every time I get those, I send them directly to Bill Meyer, our Director of Public Works. And within hours, Bill has, he's either out there himself, he's got a crew out there, he's assessing the situation, and replying back to me within, within four to six hours. Most of the time, within 24 hours, the situation's resolved, it's taken care of, I'm able to report back to the resident what was done or what's going to happen. And again, it's a lot of things that residents don't see behind the scenes. But you know, I want to give Public Works a big shout-out, especially Bill Meyer for the way he runs his department. That's all I have, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, trustee, thank you. Well said, you're right, he, when I have a problem, I call Bill, and he is there.
Yeah.
Amazing stuff. All right, village managers report.
Thank you, mayor. Just had one item I wanted to bring up, it's an unfortunate item, but I think that the community needs to be aware of. We're experiencing what I'm going to call predatory towing. Heard predatory lending, we've heard predatory this, that, and the other. And we're seeing instances now where unlicensed tow truck companies are rolling up on accident scenes. And if you've ever been in an accident, you're, you tend to be a little bit traumatized and shaken. And you know, somebody can represent that they sort of work for the village or convince you to, you know, tow you out of harm's way. And before you know it, you're being towed to a yard and being charged exorbitant fees, get your car out. So I just wanted to get that out in the community, hopefully the press can cover this, we can get you some more information. But we're finding a number of these companies, you know, you'll get a company that might be licensed or have a location in the village or nearby, and then multiple tow truck companies that aren't licensed operating out of that same yard. So I just want to get that word out there, be mindful of this situation. If you are in an accident, call 911, be patient, certainly get out of harm's way if you're in harm's way. But don't, don't take anybody's word that they're working on behalf of the village. Chief, if you can add some context to that.
One thing I would say, especially in Oklaun, but probably any jurisdiction, before anybody tow's your car, check with the officer handling the crash. He's going to know who's licensed with the village, who the village is contracted with, who has a valid license, and isn't going to try and scam you. If you've got somebody that pulls up before the police arrive and starts, and wants to put your car in a tow truck right away, tell them no, call 911, and tell them that we're waiting for the police. Nine times out of 10, they're probably just going to drive away. So especially in Oklaun, before anybody tow's your vehicle, check with one of our officers, and they'll make sure that it's a legitimate company.
Is that it, Tom?
One more thing, on our agenda tonight, we're going to also recognize people who often get overlooked when it comes to emergency services and keeping us safe, and that's our dispatcher, 911 Center. Oklaun has, without question, probably the best in the land, certainly the Southland, if not the state. Our director, Diana, sits quietly and works day in, day out. And we recently hired on a number of new dispatchers. And this is the proclamation week where we recognize dispatchers. The mayor will get to that, but I wanted to make sure that, as the manager speaking on behalf of the entire administration, thank you, Diana, and all your team for what you do. Thank you, that's all I have.
All right, we're moving on to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine, and they're brought forward at the direction of the Board of Trustees, village manager, or village committees, and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. A, request Board of Trustees approval for a garden center at the Jewel Osco, 9424 South Pulaski Road, and at 8801 South Ridgeland Avenue, from mid-April '22 through mid-June 2022. B is a request Board of Trustees approval for the market on Ridgeland to run each Saturday from May 7th, 2022, through September 24th, 2022, at the Ridgeland Church at 9343 West 90th Place, Oklaun. C, request Board of Trustee approval for a tent sale at Amazon Fresh, located at 4031 West 95th Street, from April 13th till April 24th. D, ordinance 2207-20, an ordinance approving a real estate contract between the Village of Oklaun and Wendy Walker for the purchase of certain real estate property located at 9726 South 55th Avenue, as well as approval of the settlement. E, resolution 22-07-13, a resolution waiving the competitive bidding rights and award Fueas Inc. Technology Services contract with the Oklaun Police Department. F, resolution 22-07-14, a resolution appointing members of the Arts and Events Commission within the Village of Oklaun. G, resolution 22-07-15, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an agreement between the Village of Oklaun and Plous pertaining to the use of certain community development black grant funds. H, resolution 22-07-16, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an agreement between the Village of Oklaun and Beds Plus pertaining to the use of certain community development black grant funds. I, resolution 2207, a resolution approving and authorizing execution of an assignment and assumption agreement, a business development agreement for Man Kerry's Chrysler Plymouth Incorporated. J, resolution 22-07-18, a resolution approving an agreement for third-party claim administrative services with PMA Management Corporation. And K, resolution 22-07-19, a resolution authorizing the execution of a transit shelter advertising agreement with View Transit LLC. A motion, please? I don't have that on here. L, resolution 22-07-20, a resolution authorizing and approving a separation agreement and general lease between the Village of Oklaun and Steve Raddus. Motion, please? Second? Any discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to remove B and C.
B and C?
B is in boy, C is in cat.
Okay, B and D.
C.
Okay, B and C. Okay, call for the vote on everything but B and C.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Sock?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichak?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Motion passes. B, a request Board of Trustees B, a request Board of Trustees approval for market on Ridgeland to run each Saturday from May 7th, 2022, through September 24th, 2022, at the Ridgeland Church, 6343 West 90th Place, Oaklawn, Illinois. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Mayor. Just the reason I pulled that off is in regards to, my keeps cutting out, Serge, I don't know how does that, but... Just in regards to this market, it's actually going back to where it should, which is private, not public type of thing. This is more like a farmer's market that the church is going to run. And it runs pretty much every Saturday. This is not using your taxpayer dollars. This is an event. So I wish them success. I hope this is successful and runs the way that this type of event should. I hope they find the farmers that are able to bring the vegetables and the fruit to them that they could sell. So, you know, the reason I wanted to bring that off, just to mention of how amazing that is, that the private sector picked it up.
Yes, you know, during the COVID, we lost a lot of the farmers. And when I became mayor, I was walking our farmer's market on a Wednesday, and I was rather embarrassed on the number of vendors that we had. And I asked staff to reach out and see if they can find any vendors. Well, a lot of the vendors did not want to work on Wednesday. And a lot of people are freer on Saturday, and the vendors were freer on Saturday. So Julie Miller, our ex-chamber, came to me and said, you know what? I can help one of our local churches run a farmer's market, and they can do it on Saturday, which would bring back some of the vendors and maybe make a little bit better access for the residents. A lot of people work on Wednesdays, or they're just not available on Wednesdays. So this is going to be an interesting experiment. And again, any of the profits are going to go to charity, okay, the church itself. And I hope it works out pretty good. Do I need a vote on this?
Yes.
Vote, please.
Motion.
We already have a motion. Just call for the vote.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Sock?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichak?
Yes.
Trustee Stocker?
Yes.
Motion passes. C is a request Board of Trustees approval for a tent sale at Amazon Fresh located at 4031 West 95th Street from April 13th to the 24th of April. Motion, please?
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, same concept here with Amazon Fresh. This is more than just what Jewel was requesting as far as putting up a garden center. This is an actual event. I did see the flyer on this. So this is more like a farmer's market than you would think. Not to give any more press to Amazon than they already have, but I'm glad to see that this grocery store within our boundaries is putting this together, so.
Thank you.
Hopefully, they're successful and have our residents visit and see all the free items that they're giving away, I'm sure.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Sock?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichak?
Yes.
Trustee Stocker?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, Village Clerk's Report.
We have the...
Go ahead.
The approval of disbursement resolution number 2022-7D dated April 12th, 2022, in the amount of $12,415,813.95.
Motion to pay. Motion to pay the bills.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Sock?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichak?
Yes.
Trustee Stocker?
Yes.
Motion passes. We move on to the Village President's Report. I have a number of items here on the agenda. There's A, a request Board of Trustees approval of a Liquor Licensing Review Commission referral for a Class C liquor license for the Oaklawn Fall Music Festival. And B is ordinance 22-07-21 to approve that liquor license. Motion, please?
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Sock?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichak?
Yes.
Trustee Stocker?
Yes.
Motion passes. C, request Board of Trustee approval for a Liquor Licensing Review Commission referral for a Class AV liquor license for Just My Lucky Bar located at 9207 South Cicero Avenue. And D is ordinance 22-07-22 that approves that. Now, this is an existing bar. It's just a change of ownership. Motion, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Sock?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichak?
Yes.
Trustee Stocker?
Yes.
Motion passes. And E is a request Board of Trustees approval for Liquor Licensing Review Commission referral for a Class IV liquor license for the Wall located at 9700 South Cicero Avenue. And ordinance 22-07-23 is to approve that. Motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Sock?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichak?
Yes.
Trustee Stocker?
Yes.
That also was just a change in ownership on a longtime buyer, which has been in the Village of Oaklawn. G is a request, the request Board of Trustees approval for a Liquor Licensing Review Commission referral for a Class U liquor license at Candle Soap and Wine called Oh My. It's going to be located at 4703 West 95th Street. And H is ordinance 22-07-24, increasing that license. Now, this is a liquor license for Bring Your Own. This is a new business that's going to open up. It's going to be a candle shop. It's going to be crafting, and they encourage people to bring their own wine there. So a license that was created a number of years ago for this. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Sock?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichak?
Yes.
Trustee Stocker, sorry.
Motion passes. Now, it's my honor to read a couple of proclamations here. I think these are important proclamations, and I'd like to take the time to read the whole thing. One is a mayoral proclamation for the Ronald McDonald House Charities Day. Ronald McDonald House Charities in Chicagoland and Northwest Indiana services to family, staff, and volunteers for over 45 years throughout the state of Illinois, including one right here in the Village of Oaklawn. Whereas every year, thousands of children and families travel to receive care at one of Chicago's world-renowned hospitals, whereas Ronald McDonald House has been by their side since 1977, providing a caring and compassionate environment where families can rest and find support while remaining close to their hospitalized children through Ronald McDonald House and family room programs. And whereas the Ronald McDonald Care Mobile Program in partnership with Advocate Children's Hospital provides medical care to children in underserved areas throughout the Chicago area. And whereas the Ronald McDonald House near Advocate Children's Hospital opened in Oaklawn in 2008 and has provided families with comfortable little house in the woods just steps away from the hospital where their childrens receive care. And whereas Ronald McDonald House serves thousands of families and children, as well as saves family thousands to millions of dollars in medical lodging and food costs annually. And now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Village President of the Village of Oaklawn, Cook County, Illinois, in the exercise of its home rule powers, state as fouling. Section one, the village hereby recognizes April 30th, 2022, as Ronald McDonald House Charities Days. And this mayoral proclamation shall be in full force and effect as of April 12th, 2022. If you've ever been to Ronald McDonald's House, you will find what a wonderful, beautiful facility. We're so lucky that McDonald's has chosen Oaklawn to build such a beautiful facility. And I've had a number of opportunities to stop there and talk with the families, and it is so consoling. Their children are in that hospital. Some of them are on life and death situations. To have a place in Oaklawn instead of maybe Davenport, Iowa, where they come from, okay, is very comforting. And I'm so proud to say that that's in Oaklawn. It's a wonderful place. And the second proclamation I have here is for our dispatchers, okay? And believe me, those dispatchers, that's a tough job. I was a policeman here for many, many years. I don't think I could have been a dispatcher. I didn't have the ability and capability to handle that job. You do a fine job in there. Okay, so this proclamation reads as, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is crucial to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of the information obtained from citizens who telephone the Village of Oaklawn Emergency Center. And whereas public safety communicators are the first and most crucial contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas the public safety communications are the single vital link for our police officers or firefighters by monitoring the activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunicators of the Village of Oaklawn Regional Community Center have contributed substantially, the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. And now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Village President of the Village of Oaklawn, Cook County, Illinois, in the exercise of its home rule power states as fouls, the village hereby recognizes April 10th through April 16th as National Public Safety Communicators Week in Oaklawn. This mayoral proclamation shall be in full force and effective as of April 12th, 2021. And that's all I have. You guys didn't have to stay around. Free to leave. All right, we are now moving to executive session. That's for discussion of closed meeting minutes dated March 22nd and for the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body or for setting a price for sale or lease of property owned by a public body. A motion to go on to executive session, please? A second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Sock?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow? Trustee Olenichak?
Yes.
Trustee Stocker?
Yes.